Call a meeting to order, all members of the board are present. Is there anybody here from the public to be heard? We're joined by, I see Paul Vargas on Zoom and Jessica Miller is here. Representing the Housing Authority. At some point, I'm going to ask that we move them up on the agenda, but. We're waiting the arrival of Dennis Poitras hasn't got here yet, so we'll proceed with the agenda. I'm gonna pass on the first selectman's briefing. Only one thing that I may say, we had a very severe thunderstorm come through town last night about three o'clock. But luckily, I've heard no reports of any damage. Although Joe Kalanowski was due to join us here today, I haven't seen him, so. There may be some trees down, things I have not heard of yet. But I'll keep you posted. Item five, acceptance of the regular meeting of June thirteenth. Is there a a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Rogers made a motion to accept, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Morning Karen.
Morning.
Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for all in favor of the motion on the floor, saying aye. Unanimous. Special meeting of June twentieth to twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Bear with me a second, just doing a quick double check.
Sure.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
We have a second, I'll give you a chance to peruse them.
So. During our meeting, we set, I thought we set the prices for the Ashford Citizen.
We did, the the new prices.
Yes, I I just don't see them.
Item five.
Roger said, hey, item five, I don't have them in front of me.
Item five is for selectmen's briefing.
So I'm on, I'm looking at the Tuesday, June twentieth minutes.
So you know what? Are they out on the website?
They are on the website.
I don't know, Karen was was away for weeks, so there was.
They're on the website.
Okay, let me just do a quick. That's of June twentieth, correct?
Correct.
Oh, there it is, they're just not in sequence, sometimes I forget to look down further, let me do a quick check on that. If you don't mind, oh no, that's the agenda. June twentieth minutes, I do not see on the website. I see from the seventeen, I see from the thirteenth. And. And the fifth.
Chris, are are those the minutes that Mike put on for us in in Karen's absence, and I know they didn't follow the normal?
Did he put them in the right place?
Well, I saw his email and he said that they weren't in our normal spot, but they were on there.
Okay, well, if they're not in our normal slot, I wouldn't know where they are, can we table that till our next meeting?
Absolutely, Chris, did you hear me on that? You're muted if you're talking to me.
Yeah, those are the ones that Mike posted. And he said he got them posted.
They weren't posted, I know when I went up and looked though, they weren't in the normal. We we could just pass on it, we'll carry it on our next.
Yeah, if they're not in the normal, that wouldn't be where I would look or anybody else. So I like to make sure minutes are out there before we.
But but just just for a point, the item five of those minutes that Roger and I have in front of us. The new rates are in those minutes.
All right, well, we can.
We'll table it. All right, here from Boards, Commissions, Committees.
So do we want to do the six twenty minutes?
That's what we.
Those were the six twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Let's see. On that one, Bill, I don't know if you want me to say something about what our problem at our cemetery.
You mean with the tree fall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't seen the other minutes and I can't remember if we already talked about it.
Yeah.
To let people know.
I I did get some infor- interesting information and I wanted to share with the the committee and. Permo, we were checking with Karma about. Chris was going over the procedure to report that loss. Because we did put them on a notice. And. They brought up about our previous loss where the damage was up there by the vandalism and that.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, Bill, before you go on. Roger, in those sixty minutes, does it mention that we had a tree fall in South Cemetery?
I don't have it.
Yeah, because it happened June eighteenth, I think, so Bill, what I'd like to do before you talk about what Karma is doing on this. Is for the report from the Cemetery Committee, is that we had a large oak leaning over South Cemetery that's fallen out to the gravestones. Damage will be assessed after the tree is removed. And if I understand, it was going to be removed by Public Works. Mansfield Tree Service may also be involved. Everyone acknowledged that there were many other trees that need removal, Boston Access are issues. The long-term policy addressing trees and space around cemeteries ought to be part of our committee's recommendations. Other towns have dealt with this issue as well. So, um, Bill, if you could just talk about how if Karma is able to cover this, and you said that they. Have had an issue with other damage that's happened in the past?
No.
Mansfield Tree Service did not have to be called in, the highway crew did remove the tree, they did a fine job up there. Jim had, our Sexton had called me. To let me know that there was once tombstone that apparently was damaged. One that was damaged during the removal of one of the trees. But I spoke with Joe Kalanowski and what the guys reported to him was. There was a tree branch leaning on it when they removed, but it but it had been cracked. When they removed the tree that. That particular. Item, I guess, broken in half, Joe.
Yeah, it was, it was being held up by the wood of the tree.
Yeah.
When we moved the wood, it just fell over.
So I I believe the total that we've seen so far, and I've got to go up there and take another look. Is is three stones that were damaged as a result of the. The storm, which if that's the extent of it, we were very lucky.
Including the cracked one?
Yes. Now for the Karma relating to that. Because we had put them on notice of the loss when it happened and Chris was following up on how to proceed on that. And we've got a letter that's forthcoming. From the Karma rep or the adjuster on it. And. They have determined through their legal department. That we have no coverage on any of the stones. That technically those are privately owned. By the families that represent or represented on those stones or their. Their relatives. And that on that basis, they are, they cannot cover or we're not covered on that. What what he furthermore, because I said to them, well, we have a program of restoration. That we have a company come in and do it and. As a result of my conversation with this person, I've also put a call in the council that I haven't heard back with. His recommendation is that we don't touch any of the stones. Because legally, they're not our property. They're private property owned by the successors or whatever, the the people that are buried there. So that's kind of a dilemma, I haven't shared that with anybody because I wanted to share it with the board first. And also get this letter that they're going to be sending from Karma, so. We'll carry it carry it on our next agenda, but I. That was kind of news to me and I don't think a procedure that we follow over many years where we've been trying to restore. Some of our. Historic. Cemetery stones up there, so.
Can we get, can we get estimates on restoration at least?
Well, I know.
So they can be shared with the families, if we can find the families?
Oh boy. That would be a monstrous task in itself, but the the average cost that I hear from from our Sexton is about eight hundred dollars a stone. For the restoration, in fact, as we speak, as far as I know, there's some restorations going on up at South Cemetery. So.
By by whom?
By the company that we normally use.
So are we? Do do we stop them from doing restoration?
I I. I'd like to get feedback from Town Council first, but it may lead to that.
All right, if we have, can I have a, can we get a copy of the restoration company contract?
I'll ask Jim for that, yes.
For Jim? Oh, it's not filed with us?
I don't believe we have an ongoing contract, I think it's not done on a per job basis. Jim tells me they've been using them for years and years. Do we have a, Chris, are you aware of any contract and file with them? And what's the name of that company again?
Beyond the Grave Stone, and I don't remember overseeing the contract.
We'll look into that.
This, yeah, it would be unfortunate if we can't. Do anything because, again, you said it'd be basically Herculean task to find out. Who the families are that own those, but we only have three. So have, I'll talk with Jim to see if we've identified who owns them.
Yeah, one of them is a Kendall, from what I understand, it's damaged. And I have not talked to Richard Perry yet about it. I know he has done private restoration, because he's. Their family is one of the oldest families in town. And they, he has paid personally for a number of restorations on family stones throughout the years. He's also the gentleman I mentioned, he's interested in serving on the committee. But we don't have to address that tonight, so I will look in and try to get whatever paperwork Jim has with Beyond the Grave. And I will also, as soon as I have an opportunity to run it by Duncan. And get some input from him, I'll share, we'll carry it on our agenda and I'll share it with the board.
Thank you. That was all of my report.
Okay. Jessica, were you able to get a hold of Dennis?
No, no, so whenever you wanna. You can move me up on the agenda, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, I was trying to give Dennis a few minutes, they're under. Their item C under new business. And I know Dennis said that he and Jessica had a commitment. Early this morning, they'd like us to move it up on the agenda.
So let me know at what point you want it moved up.
Well, Jessica, we were gonna wait for Dennis, but Jessica said she's comfortable to proceed, so. If we could have that motion now to move item C under new business up. To where we are now on the agenda, which is.
I make a motion to move item C under old bus, I'm sorry, under new business. Up to next on the agenda.
I'll second.
There's a second, any discussions, hearing none or in favor of saying aye. So Catherine can hear you, I'm gonna ask you to move up here.
Yeah, thank you.
And Paul and Karen.
So everyone should have, I sent over two letters. One in regards to the ARPA request and then the other one. In regards to. Small cities grant for next year, so does everyone have both letters? Okay, so we can start with the ARPA. As I said in the letter. Last August, we were. Allocated twenty-three thousand dollars eighty, twenty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars for specifically for rental assistance. So we had year one, which ends the thirtieth of June. And this year, we have ten residents receiving. A total of twelve thousand five hundred and six dollars in rental assistance, and that's again the ARPA money. In addition, our nonprofit, the Ashford Housing Development Corporation received twenty thousand dollars. As like seed money to start that. So what we've done in the past year.
Jessica, so the the seed money was to start. With your application for a five oh one C three?
Yes, among other things, yeah, it was just, because we. We didn't have any money to start, so that was. Okay, so. So in the year that we've that we've gotten that money, we have applied, we have submitted our application to the IRS to become a five oh one C three. We are a registered corporation in the state of Connecticut now. So what we're asking is that if there is any ARPA money left that we, I mean, I. The total amount I'm asking for is seventy-five thousand, I really. Wasn't sure what's available, I just put together some numbers. And our plan is to develop a marketing campaign. So that we can go out and fundraise, so so our long-term sustainability will be. From fundraising. So we also want to develop a strategic plan. And also the nonprofit will work with housing on the rehab projects that we're going to be starting. And then also securing additional grants. With the nonprofit securing additional grants, just to continue operating. Does anyone have any questions? I guess I'm just, I mean, again, I'm not sure what's available, if there is anything available.
I mean, we presently have the last accounting and I've asked our finance office to fine tune that. We have about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand is the last figure I saw. But we also have several other projects that the board is considering. And we're not sure what portion of that seven, one seventy-nine. We're not compelled to spend that. Immediately, so we're trying to make some long-term judgments on that.
We actually have, we have to have our plan in place by the end of this year and then expend all of the monies by the end of next year. Yeah, sorry. Bill, you said we have some. Things we're discussing in terms of using ARPA money, what are those? I don't. Know of anything that we have discussed.
We've talked about some signage.
We had already put that in the, we already put that in the budget.
We talked about funding for the. Position. For the. Our newsletter.
Yeah.
And we, when we put that forth.
And and.
Didn't that go into the capital improvement plan or whatever?
No, not not our latest discussions on that. There's another project that I have not had a chance, because we're still getting prices on it. But there are some senior se- senior center. Funding through ARPA, through the governor's office. That what we looked at was upgrading the HVAC system for the senior center. Don't hold me to the figure, but the figure that would be has been designated to the town of Ashford is about nine thousand. I've been in discussions with Eastford and also the town of Union. Because if a municipality does not have a senior center. They can designate those tons of funds to a town that does. Right now, Eastford has indicated they're willing, although we haven't seen paperwork. The designated at least half of their funds to us. I had a discussion last week with the first selectman from Union. Who's considering that, they're they'd like to be able to split their their funds, and they're not as much as ours, I think. Eastford is about six thousand. Union, I'm not sure, I believe it's five thousand, but to contribute to our our funding, but. The one price that I've got to put split units into the senior center right now. I got a price from Nutmeg, they're at sixty-two thousand in total. And Stafford Mechanical came in and gave us a second price, they're at about fifty-seven thousand. I haven't had a chance to compare the proposals side by side to make sure. They're apples to apples. Another cost that we may incur that the fire department ran into when they went to split units. Was they had to upgrade their generator. To be able to. To take care of the additional power requirements of the split units. I don't know, I'm mentioning that both the Stafford Mechanical and I think to. Doing analysis of our generate the senior center, so. The difference between that will probably end up being fifty thousand or whatever, so. Those are things where. The Board of Selectment will have to consider when.
Right, so yeah, I guess we're just asking us to be considered when you are making your decisions regarding.
I know what we're talking about, you kind of detailed that on the rental assistance.
Yes.
Is there any way to break down anymore with what you're anticipating cost on the the other items under?
You can, yes, absolutely, I I don't have that ready for today, but I can send that and then that will help you, yeah, absolutely.
That was my, that was my thinking as well. To have a to have a breakdown, so we understand what those costs.
Can I point out that there are also things that were approved at town meeting that we have not done yet? Like the radios for the fire department.
So aren't those funds already earmarked?
They are.
So we're talking, if I understand correctly, Bill, what you're saying is that we have. About what is, what was a hundred and seventy-five thousand that has not been earmarked, correct?
My my understanding and the last accounting I got from the finance department. Was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Which did not include. Any of our previously earmarked. Items which were approved at town meeting. Town radios doing the 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 front of the Milton Hall repavers. There are several smaller items like that that have not been done, but that is not included in that one seventy-nine accounting.
In other words, those ones have to be applied against the hun- hundred and seventy-nine?
Those of, my understanding, those have already been deducted from the bottom line.
Thank you.
The the one seventy-nine and I. I just asked Laura this morning, and I know it was last minute, but I asked her to revisit it. And.
Yeah, we'll treat that as a tentative number.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, you know, we'll certainly take that under consideration.
Okay, thank you. The second thing is the moderate rehab of the Pompeii House Senior Housing. So right now, we have an opportunity to apply for funding for this project. We have, as I wrote in my letter, up to four million dollars available from the Department of Housing. Specifically for state-sponsored housing in the portfolio, which we are in. And then up to two million. For from small cities, and then also we are looking at energized CT initiatives. Some of the scope of work would fall, would would be eligible for some of those money. So we're looking at three different funding options. And. So what I'm asking the Board of Selectment to consider is. I have been in contact with Megan from Community Consulting. She says there is a substantial amount of money in the. Program, the program income funds. And DOH has already pre-approved a change of use for some of those funds. To go towards the pre-development costs, specifically architect. And. A development consultant, which I have a posted an RFP four one. So that's out there right now. And then also the other thing would be to act as the grant administrator for the small cities application, which is. Due in May of twenty twenty-four. But it would require, and this is again based on speaking with Megan, it would require a town employee to attend training. For that small cities grant.
How much is the training?
Oh, the training is, well, it's caught, the cost is free, but it is, there's two sessions and I believe they are two days long each. There's. The first session is September of twenty twenty-three, and then the other one is in October. But it's a two or three day. Training. And again, in order for Ashford, the town of Ashford to. Qualify as the grant administrator for those applications, someone from the town has to do this training. Which I'm assuming in the past someone has. And I don't know if they just are not here anymore, or maybe Megan is incorrect and someone is up on their training certification, I don't know. But.
I kind of assume that Megan was our.
Yeah.
Is what you're asking to be grant administrator?
Right, so even though Community Consulting would act, would do the application, they would do all of the work. The town, since it is. Technically going through the town of Ashford, they do have to be, they are considered the grant administrator. Again, all the funding, all the monies goes to the town, the town pays out all the, you know, monobrakers, everything. So everything flows to the town of Ashford, which is why someone needs to do the training.
So one more, I'm sorry.
As a employee of the Housing Authority. Do statutes permit you to be a representative also for the town?
I don't know if that is.
That was kind of a gray area.
Do it if that is something we can do. Because. I would certainly not want that to be the holdup for this grant.
There's no harm in you taking the training, correct?
No, absolutely not, no, I mean, I've already done some training on. The grant itself, but this is obviously, it's like at least four days. Of eight hours of training, it's pretty intensive. So I, yeah, I would be more than willing to to do the training, I think, just because I'm going to be so involved in every aspect of it. It it could only help me as well, so. I can that, if that is a possibility. I just wanted to you to be aware that that is definitely a stipulation we have to figure out.
No, Jessica, I know you and I had had a conversation several weeks ago. Regarding the funds for the housing rehab that we. The town has right now, and I, the last I checked, we have about a hundred and seventy thousand. And I asked Laura this morning to try to update that, because she's also been consulting with Megan.
Okay.
And they have an active housing rehab program right now. That's about thirty-five thousand that the town is contributing.
Okay.
She's going to verify whether that seventy is after that or before that. Basically, in order to apply for this project with the rehab with. Stoves, refrigerators, that sort of thing, we're doing. The floors and everything, we haven't been done in almost thirty years.
Right, there's a substantial amount of work that does need to be done.
So you're looking for this, the contribution from our CBD grant funds.
Right.
As seed money?
I'm not exactly sure what you mean by seed, so just to get the project started.
Correct.
I think, no, it would be specifically to, so when we do hire an architect, we can give them. They're gonna need some money, I mean, it might be like thirty thousand dollars, because we, the the problem is. When we, when we send in the application, we have to have ninety percent of the architect drawings done. So ninety percent has to be completed, so we have to. Pay for at least some of that, you know, I mean, architects, especially ones that work with housing authorities, they're aware of the financial constraints. They will work with you on that.
Yeah.
But we still need to come up with some money, I mean, like I'm saying, maybe between thirty and fifty thousand dollars. Upfront to get the architecture.
That amount is what you'd be looking to our.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, what I just heard you say. What I just heard you say was fifteen, thirty, fifty thousand. Well, which, what's the number?
She said thirty to fifty.
Thirty to fifty thousand.
Well, that's a big gap, so why?
I mean, I, three or four years ago, we, we started this, um. We started to do a rehab project. We didn't get very far because we didn't have the funding. At that time, the architect, I had already hired an architect and um. We didn't get to the point of drawing anything, but um it was thirty thousand dollars back then, okay? So I'm just using that as a reference. Everything has gone way up, but you know, even fifty thousand dollars of the program income funds would be. I think enough to get us up to the application point. I'm sorry.
Is there anything that's reimbursable out of that fifty thousand?
Well, right, so what we're doing is we're also, so we're applying for the small cities grant of up to two million. But we're also applying for pre-development costs through the Department of Housing. So some of that could be reimbursed back to the town. I, I can't guarantee that, but if we're successful in getting um some pre-development money. Which would cover anything else that we need to cover, you know, um. Part of that could be having that reimbursed back to the town.
Well, we certainly entertain that.
Yeah, well, um, actually, isn't this a request that can be made directly to the Board of Finance? And it would be our, the selectman's recommendation? And I'm not saying taking it out of our, I'm saying taking it out of the general fund.
Dennis? Come on in. We're in here.
Oh, this is it. I'm thinking of, you know.
Uh-oh, we started without you. Ultimately, I believe it would probably have to be approved by the Board of Finance, Catherine. What I wanted to do was present it to our board, let this digest a little bit and have a discussion. What I thought perhaps the next stage would be, we'd either have a special meeting or one of our, our regular meetings. Invite Megan to join us. You know, I don't know how many applications they have presently pending. That would impact that hundred and seventy imbalance that we have. I also don't know. If Ma- Megan recommends us having a minimum amount stay in that account.
Right, so that, yeah.
You know, so those are sign, a sign of variables that.
Yeah, I think today I really just wanted to make, make you aware of this is what we're working on. Um, at some point, you know, these things need to be considered, um, you know, from the, from the town, so.
You talked about the uh, the person in charge of dispersing funds and.
Uh, as the yes, the, the, yeah, the grant, yeah.
Now, who did that? Not the. Who raised the subject? Was that Cheryl who used to do that for the town and? I've got to check into that. I was saying, I thought it was Megan or Megan's company that did that. But Jessica was saying that there, her understanding needs to be a town employee. And my question to Jessica was, because I know there's kind of a line drawn between housing authority and. Interaction or with the town. I didn't know if in her capacity is, 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 is. An employee of Astrid Housing Authority, whether she could represent the town as an employer or not. It's something we can get clarified. It's just, you know how legal leases.
What's the timetable on this? What's the need on, from timing perspective?
Well, I mean, the application is due next May, May of twenty twenty four. Um, so we are on a very tight timeline. So, um, yeah, I mean, I guess we should maybe try to set up a meeting with Megan sooner, like.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to her hopefully this week and, and see what her schedule is. I'm assuming it's more convenient for you to join because we have morning and evening meetings depending on what week it is. But I'm assuming a morning meeting and let me try to.
You may, you may want to talk to Megan to find out what the general rules are ahead of time. And she may or may not be needed at a meeting, depending on.
Right, especially with.
Whether she's that, whether she is actually involved in administering.
Right, yes, so, yeah.
Roger, any thoughts or?
It would seem easier if she could do it, since she's gonna be.
Well, and she's. Legal terms, you're more familiar with it, but she has been acting as an agent for the town and her company for a number of years. So um, I don't know if that qualifies with their definition.
I mean, based on what I'm reading from the depart, uh, you know, they have a manual for the application and it, it. From what I'm re- understanding, it's somewhat an, an actual town employee. You know, yeah.
He would be a contractor versus.
Yeah, and I'll talk to our treasurer about it also because she's also been involved in other towns to see. I, I'm going to assume that you're right that Cheryl was probably acting in that capacity.
Yeah, just because, I mean, we've done projects before. And so unless this is a new, um, you know, rule that, uh, you know, someone from the town has to do the training. I mean, I'm assuming it was Cheryl, but I could be wrong.
But let's, um. Well, you know, within the next two weeks. We'll plan on uh regrouping and, and try to, we'll all do a little of our homework, get research.
Hopefully I'll be, I have jury duty next Thursday.
Well, it's good to know they share the misery.
Well, I will likely get knocked out. Most attorneys don't want another attorney on the jury.
That's true.
Because they have a tendency to be directed by the, the other members, saying, you tell us what to do. And they don't like that. They want everyone to have their own opinion.
You'd be sure to point that out, Dennis.
You go in, you go through all that stuff you have to go through, then they bring you to the courtroom, then they ask the attorney, anybody want to get out? Yeah, what's your reason? Then the, the attorney to, uh, why deer with the, oh, the uh jurors. And uh, so they interview each juror typically and see if they have bias or whatever. And you know, they have certain amount of uh automatic rejections. We don't even need a reason. You can just go through and say, I just don't like this guy, I don't want that. You know, without having to explain. The others you have to explain, but there's, there's a, a, a limited number of that type of rejection.
They can use their own discretion and not.
So we'll see, we'll see. I don't know. I've been there once before, spent the better part of the day there. Before uh John Boland uh let me out because my son was graduating in Florida that week. I mean, I said. I, I can't, please let me go.
I spoke to John a couple, couple of months ago. Tony had just retired. Time flies. Well, thank you for what you folks do.
Sure, yes, thank you. And um, just one last thing, I want to say that this, um, the depart. The Department of Housing is very eager for housing authorities such as ours, especially in the portfolio. To um modernize and do a rehab. So I think right now is probably one of the most favorable times for us to, to move on this, which is why. Um, I'm really just focusing on, on trying to get everything done so we can actually apply next May. So and we, so again, there's two applications. Um, and so the town would really only be working with the small cities grant, obviously, and then. H- housing will do the other application, but both of them submitted at the same time. Um, and you know, even I just pride the best opportunity that's been out there, so.
So I just like to commend you for all of the work that you have done and all the progress you've made over the last year with this.
I don't think.
Uh, I think it's real, pretty astounding, so uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I, I don't know what we would do without her.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate you joining us and I'll be in touch. What I may do is shoot for two weeks from today.
Yes, okay.
If it's convenient for Megan, but I'll, I'll keep in touch. See you, Dennis. We got you and Ty out of here in time for your next meeting.
The dog woke up in the middle of the night, thunder, which, and plus he's got a soft field paralysis, so. The thunder and causes more anxiety, so can't breathe.
Oh, jeez.
I lay on the couch and hold him and then he paced around and. Two hours later, he finally went over to his bed and lay down and. I said, do I get off the couch? I'm just cramped. Also, I have my costume. It's quarter to nine.
I'll get back there and enjoy your fun.
Next phase of life. Good to see you guys.
Take care. All right, we're going to move back to the agenda. And I'd like to make another request that we add an item. As a candidate to talk about um personnel matter. Um, to go into executive session.
Uh, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session, uh, that we add an item to the agenda for an executive session to talk about a personnel matter.
I'll second that.
There's a second, I would ask that uh, we ask Joe Kalanowski to join us.
Uh, first we have to.
All in favor of the mo-, you're right, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we want to do this now?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executives. Oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session and invite Joe Kalanowski to join us.
I'll second that.
We have motion on.
That motion is to discuss a personnel matter.
Yep, correct. The motion on the floor, any more discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Thank you, folks.
So you've got to stop recording.
Yeah, who's on there? Mike? I don't see Tyke on there.
So if you don't have Tyke on there and you're not able to reach them, what you can do is you can shut off the. Uh, you can turn off your, your uh sound, the office spill. And you can also hide your um video.
But will you be able to hear us?
What I'll do is I will call the office.
Bill, I can just get, I'm the only public on here, right?
Well, he still has, he still has to do it this way. Um, so again, Bill. If we don't have someone to help us with this, what you can do, and it's going to be a lot of dead air for everybody else, but um, you can. Shut off your uh camera, you know. Uh, which is hide your image, whatever that is, and also uh mute.
Okay, and then nobody.
And then what you can do. And, oh, I can call or you can call me.
Okay, I think Chris is trying to get a hold of Mike right now to see if there's a. I believe he's in the office.
But that's a workaround you can use in these situations.
And you'll just call in, Catherine.
Yeah, just getting my, the right phone for it. So excuse me for a minute while I get the right phone.
All right, so you're gonna take us out for a couple of minutes and I'll call you.
Yeah, I'm jumping into the meeting right now. You, I'll put them into a.
All right, thank you.
We're all set?
Yeah, Mike's gonna take you out.
We are out of executive sessions.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, if that's all right?
Yeah, I think probably that motion should include we. Putting a special item on the agenda. Regarding the Department of Public Works.
Okay, bear with me, I'm looking at the agenda and I don't see anything Department of Public Works. So I'm, you're saying to add that to the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, I make a motion that we add uh Department of Public Works Consulting to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Any more discussing, discussion, all in favor of seeing if I'm saying aye?
And we're going to move right into that, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion. That we hire Joe Kalanowski as a part-time employee at the rate of forty dollars an hour. For a maximum of twenty-five hours a month with no benefits. Starting, a week, I'm sorry, a week, um, with no benefits, starting July eleventh.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to do is thank Joe for his continued service to our town. It's much appreciated.
I, I agree with that wholeheartedly, Joe.
Um, do we want to put a, a timeline on this for a period not to exceed a certain period of time or?
I think, I think we'll leave that to Joe's discretion, well, in terms of when he thinks. Yeah, when he thinks that it's done, then he can. Do that.
I, I, you know, I would say to be reconsidered at a later date. All right, further than that. All right, there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm all done.
You're done.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll just blow, I'll blow you a kiss.
Um, we have any damage to this thing?
Uh, small tree on Bicknell Road and other than that, minor washouts on all of your, but nothing that need.
Camper Lane hold up?
Yeah, just minor, nothing that I want to touch because we have thunderstorms this afternoon and more dirt. Nothing where you can't, nothing serious at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we will return to the agenda. Item seven under old business, status of the Astrid School Program is uh proposed by the recommission. As for our last meeting, I did put a note in um to the citizen that. Is that the printer is soon to be released? I understand it's going to come out for the first this year. Um, this month, but hold on one second. And basically asking for people that are interested in participating in the program in contacting this office. I have in the interim and I forwarded on to both of you. A uh spreadsheet that uh was put together by Courtney Gerlach. Um, that had a number of names that she and I guess Megan Smith had been circulating for people interested. Sent that on to you folks just simply as a guideline, but it does show there's.
Forty something.
It was forty something. I, I counted about eighty students potential there. Obviously, we're not going to go anywhere near, be able to go anywhere near that number, but um.
I, I, I guess I have a little difficulty with someone submitting the names of other people rather than those people. Contacting you themselves.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I did tell Courtney that, and I thanked her for submitting that to us, but that we were using it simply as a reference point. My intention is that we don't use that as, as a selection criteria until we do have people personally contacting us.
All right, all right.
But I think it's symptomatic of, of the need that we all know we have out here. And why we've been going about this now for a year. So.
And recognizing that this is not a program that selectmen, that a town usually puts forth.
No, I, I, I think it's unique. Um, I, I think it's reflective of the times we're in. I mean, I, I, as you know, a year ago, a little less. I had several discussions with E S C and also the group that was affiliated with Y M C and Vernon. On why they gave up on this and, and primarily it was because of. Their concerns about staffing and, and the inability for them to get consistent staffing. And I, I think the fact that, I don't, I'm not going to say this is a hybrid, but the, the, I think we may be setting some sort of. A standard of, of partnering with the school to meet a, a dire need. It's certainly not the. The normal responsibility to the Board of Selectmen, but I think it says a lot for our board. It says a lot for our board that we do recognize the need there and we're. Trying to assist and, and basically what it is, is. These employees will be working for the town. The payroll and the revenues will be run through our finance department. But the direct supervision of the staff that will be at the school. Working the program. Will be directly under the superintendent. And I haven't found any other arrangement in, in the state that's based on it, there may be out there. Obviously, I haven't called a hundred and sixty-nine towns. But, um. It's going to be one of these things that we're going to have to revisit and, and, and do, uh. On a review basis after the first semester, just to see if their weakness is there. Where there could be improvements or whether it's working or not. I certainly.
I think. I think the supervision under the direct, you know, directly onto the superintendent is. Really the best part of this. Because I feel that. The superintendent is very knowledgeable. About, um. Safety, about a number of things, um, related to the children just because of the role she has today.
Discipline issues. General contacts.
This is, to me, to me, this is the best way for that to work.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, there are some things that lie ahead for us to make a decision. Setting some policies. I had forwarded you, and I had a meeting earlier, uh. Last, last Friday. With Dave Ross and I had forwarded you some draft job descriptions. To the three positions. If you folks could take another look at that, I, I've also forwarded them on to Cindy. But we should firm up on that, I mean, that's one thing that we've got to get. Resolved and we're all satisfied, satisfied now on the same page. Um, setting general policies. I mean, my understanding, it's going to be offered for first through eighth grade. Uh, three in the afternoon to six in the evening. Or afternoon. Um. But those are things that we ought to set specific guidelines, I think. Our next, where the citizens should have those laid out.
And the age, and the ages. Of the children.
First grade to eighth grade is, is what I.
Thank you.
Um, another thing, and I think it's a, a very critical part, particularly if, if, if Courtney's. List is indicative of, of the people in need of these. Is how do we do a selection process?
Right.
I don't have the particulars. Um, but I understand several towns do a first come, first served basis.
Mm-hmm.
You have to figure out how we do that. There are other towns that I've heard about, and again, I, I'm not familiar with the mechanism to do it. But it, that it be done on a lottery basis. Now, I don't know what that means, uh, does that mean you put all the names in a hat? And you pull them out? Um, that's probably too simplified, but. Those are things that lie ahead for us and, and, and the school.
Mm-hmm.
Firm up on as soon as possible and, and. There's probably a couple of things that I'm, I'm leaving out of that, that. We'll all have to put our thinking caps on it and come up with that.
Yeah.
They're not major issues, but they're critical to, to the, the program running smooth. And getting.
And certainly, and certainly critical to, um. Managing the expectations of the pub- public.
Yeah, now, a couple of other things is, I'm, I'm talking here and I said I probably didn't think of that, but I have thought of. Is. Some towns, from what I understand, ask for a month in advance. Intuition payments be made. There are towns that have been ongoing that ask for a week in advance. Um, those are decisions we're going to have to make. We're also going to have to go to the Board of Finance, and I was at their meeting last Thursday night, gave them the heads up that we. Be making some sort of a presentation to them in the near future. To set up a line item, um. And I, I think we'll have to work with our treasurer and that to go through that mechanism.
It's, it's to set up. Is set up and fund a line mi- item?
Correct. I mean, the direct funding from the town, we've always said this is going to be self-sufficient program. Paid for by the users. We've got to define what that means, if, if we ask for a month in advance with tuition. That goes directly into that fund. Do we have the mechanism set up then to pay our employees? That way. Or do we need to do something else? But those are refinements that we're going to have to work out. And like I said.
I think.
Couple of other things.
I think we're going to need to, uh, have a conversation with the auditor. About how that fund would be set up so that. You know, if we put money into the budget, if you will, add into the budget. For this, then we also have to add into our revenues. Because we've got to balance, and so let's make sure that however we do this, that the auditors have. Assessed it for us.
I agree. I agree. And, um, as I put into the note, and I know Catherine was a bit concerned about it, I. The, the focus that I've been talking with the school and, and, and Cindy about was to try to get this implemented and in place. By September first, which is the start of the school year, which. Just makes sense to me.
Yeah. Well, it's only two months away.
I'm hoping we can meet that.
Yeah.
So th- this is something that's going to. Take some time and we're going to have to put together in a relatively short time. Regarding policy and procedures. Make sure that the treasurer, the auditor is all comfortable, the board of finance is aware of what's going on. So.
My con- my con-. Yeah, my concern is that. Um, it's not yet a done deal, and so. The concern is, is managing public expectations in case, um, there is an issue, and whenever we give a date. We need to make sure it's an achievable date. So there were two parts to that, one was it sounded like a done deal. And two. Uh, and we have not voted on this. And two, um, that the date. Infer, certainly infers that it's a done deal. And I don't know that we can get everything done in that amount of time, so please let me know where I could be of help. I will look at those job descriptions again. And in terms of policies to be set. I suggest that we have a, you, you were saying, Bill, that we were going to meet with the. Superintendent and the Chair of the Board of Ed. That our board was going to meet with them, that's what was said during our last meeting, is that still the case?
And that is still my intention, I think. Whatever we do, we have to coordinate with them.
Hmm, and Dave.
That needs to be done pretty quickly.
And Dave Ross.
And, you know, and Dave.
And Dave, and Dave, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree. Um. I think it's been obvious the intent of this board is to move forward, but. Because of circumstance and just because of the. The responsibility that we, the town is taking on as well as the school for a brand new program. Um. It's probably taken a lot longer than I thought. Right, right. So. I think the pieces are there. Um. Catherine, do you want to make a motion that we go forward with this as, as discussed? Would you be more comfortable with that?
No, I want us to meet with the superintendent and the Chair of the Board of Ed, which is what our intent was.
I mean.
Work out whatever we needed to.
The reverse of that is I, I don't want people to have the impression we're not going forward. Or our intent is not to go forward with this. Cause I believe our intent has been obvious for a long time, we. We're putting a lot of time in this and we intend to. To bring this to fruition unless there's. Catastrophic thing that we're missing here, and I, I don't think there is.
No, I'm not ready to make that motion, I, again, our intent was to meet with the Chair of the Board of Ed. And with the superintendent. To make sure that we've worked through everything. You know, you have been the only person who's had a conversation with them. I think that, uh, both, um. Roger and I've stayed out of it because you are working with her. So, um.
And I have not, I have not.
So we've had no oppor- Yeah, we've had no.
Directly with Jane Irvin, and I've been working through Cindy, who's been. You know, the intermediary between us and the Board of Ed, so it's a good idea, I'll try to set that up, uh. Perhaps through August, special meeting, uh. Well, let me, let me check, I believe Cindy is off this week. But, uh, let me check with her and see what, what works for her and I'll get back to you. You folks on it. Okay. Item B. Um, action on the Ashford School Committee. Regarding the RFP, I have not seen a final, everybody is still working on that. I know that the school just got back some feedback that they had requested from CCM, I have not had a chance to. To review, they were suggesting on. Cutting something out of the RFP, but I, I just haven't had a chance to review that. That's still in process. Item C, consider funding source.
Bill, is that something we should be looking at as well?
Um, I believe I sent it to you and Roger, or Chris did, um.
Okay, I didn't. Okay.
You're certainly welcome to take a look at it, and if, if we haven't, we'll get it out to you folks. But it's something that's been being worked on between Cindy and Jim Rupert. Uh, like I said, they just brought CCM into it. We've had our town council take a look at it and we've had some of their specialists. Look at it, so there's a conglomeration of people, but. Let me get the final draft that's. As close as the final draft as we had, I'll send it to you folks, there's no reason, if it hasn't gone out to you already.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the funding source is, is the same state of affairs as the RP. I get the feeling. That we're not going to have that until that RFP is issued. And an architect slash engineer has been brought on board. Um. But I'll keep you posted on that, I haven't heard anything more.
Right.
I've also advised the Board of Finance that we're kind of in limbo on that, but. There will be more information coming to them about that.
Right, um, and yeah, we would need to have the responses to the RFP to understand what they're, what they're, uh, anticipating charging.
Yeah. Well, and, and other costs that.
Yes.
Be recommending that we make, I, I mean, there is a, a cost that came in. That I have to be paid for through our finance company, uh, office, excuse me. Uh, that came in through Munistat. Uh, to file a form that I found out that Cheryl had been filing, I don't think any of us. Were aware of it. And they filed it, bill came to about five hundred dollars. I understand this is an annual, uh. Report that's mandated by the state to be filed, so. And they picked that up. Um, so we're paying that out of our sources, it's not a, a cost that would be paid for anyway out of our bonding, so.
So you said they picked it up, who, who is they?
Munistat. Our finance directors, uh, advisors.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll get the name of that report too, because I was never aware that Cheryl was doing it. Nobody in that office, Laura included. Was a, aware that Cheryl was doing it, so.
Well, we keep finding our. We keep finding our little surprises.
We do, we do. God bless her, she did a lot of things that I think a lot of us weren't aware of. The, uh, item D here, Ashford Citizen Review Draft of Establishment of Policies and Procedures. As you know, and as requested by during our last meeting, I also. Put an article with the new rate structures. And the limitations on the maximum advertising size. Um. It hasn't been published yet or it hasn't been received by anybody, so I don't have any feedback on that, I'm not expecting. Do we want to go into that now or do we want to carry that on to our next agenda?
I'd like to carry that on to our next agenda, I did review what was recommended by. Town Council and agree with the vast majority of it, but I do want us to, uh. Uh, have a session to, uh, discuss the rest.
Again, this is. Pending, I mean, are we going, putting this out, publishing this here very shortly or?
Publishing our procedures and policies, well, the idea is once we have consensus on the board. To, then, then we.
The pay structure in the format, okay.
That's already in there.
Okay. That's fine.
That we did to take care of, because it, we were advised with the meeting, this is about general policies.
That's fine, yep.
And if you don't have those, we can. I, I think we forward you also Duncan's suggestions. And I agree, I agree with ninety percent of it, Catherine, not, not all of it. Um. Update on transfer station, uh, upgrades. I, um. Think I mentioned to you at our last meeting. But the guard station is going to be delivered tomorrow morning. Um, hopefully between eight and nine, it's been, uh. Delivered from Pennsylvania, they're going to leave sometime this afternoon, I understand. And so we're getting ready for that, once that gets there, we're going to get the electrical straightened out through Joe. Um. We're still waiting for delivery of the Millings. So we can finish that road, so it probably will not be set. In its permanent pad yet. Um. It also could be moved. Uh, until we get the findings and that. That road.
Where, I forgot where we're actually getting the Millings from, since we're not getting them from the state.
Joe can get, as long as we pick them up. He can get them for nothing from the town of Talon. Who's giving them to us.
That's right, thank you.
We're going to have to probably bring our loader up there and load our trucks. But they said on, if we do that, we can get as much as we need. From them.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Yeah, that was.
Nice, thank you.
Nice interaction between towns. Um, discuss and or act on ASME contract. Um. I'd like to probably call a special meeting of our board. In the near future. This week, if possible, it's probably going to be next week. I, I did talk to Karen yesterday. Um. And I asked her to send that because I've marked up my copy. Of what their proposal was to us, I've asked her to see if she could get that sent to us in Word. Where we can have some blank copies. And make adjustments to that if we want. Um, Karen, I see you on there, you, I know you're muted. Have you had any, did you get a hold of, uh? The state rep.
I sent Laura an email, I, I haven't heard back yet.
Okay, all right. So, uh. I think our board needs to meet first, if you can get that for us, I think it'd be convenient though. But, uh. We'll set up a special meeting and, and go over the contract. And another thing Karen's going to do is, uh. Talk to the state rep about some alternate dates.
Maybe what we could do. Oh, I was going to say maybe. Maybe we could do both. Not, never mind, I was going to say maybe we could do both that and review of the. Uh, citizen policies, it's the same, uh, same thing. Uh, so working session.
Yep.
That's up to you.
I have no objections to that. Uh. Item eight, new business boards and commission appointments. We don't have any, is that correct, uh, Chris? Or we should reappoint members here? I see. Go ahead.
Uh, Commission on Aging are three reappointments. No, four reappointments, sorry.
Esther Jane.
And they, they've all indicated a, a wish to be reappointed?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, let me see here.
Esther, Jane, Catherine, Charlene.
And reappointments, uh. Okay, so if you'd like, I'll make the motion.
That would be to June thirtieth.
I'm going to make one for each one. Or. Uh, they're all being reappointed to June thirtieth, so do we want to do this as one motion or multiple motions?
I think you could do it in one, one motion with many thanks.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the following individuals be reappointed to the Commission on Aging. Um, with their terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Esther Jagadon, I always do this, Jagons, Jagonski. Jane Martin. Catherine Sampson, Charlene Armitage.
Is there a second?
I'll certainly second that.
Any more discussion?
Just to thank, just to thank them, uh a thank you to them for their work on this commission.
Absolutely. Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for vote, all in favor, seeing if I've been saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous with much appreciation. Economic development, we have two vacancies, we also put in the citizen a, a full-page article you'll see. Uh showing all of the vacancies that we have on various boards. And Chris did a, a nice job on working with Sherry Much on going through terms and. When they meet and the frequency and that sort of thing, so um. That's much appreciated. Uh economic development, we have two vacancies, those are also shown. Uh inland wetland commission fill one regular vacant seat, term to expire June first of twenty-five. Vacant alternate seats, terms of which expire in June first of twenty-seven, reappoint regular members to. June first of twenty-seven, um Bob Presard and Richard Sulek, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, bear with me on that.
And Michael uh Deitz.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure before somebody makes a motion, I understand this one, says one vacant, what, fill one regular member seat. The term of which expires June first, two thousand twenty-five.
Now, when we're not making a motion on.
Okay, very good, and then one vacant alternate seat. And we don't have that either.
And then reappointment, that will, we will need a motion to reappoint the following people.
I got it.
June first of twenty-seven.
Alternate member.
Would you? That'll be a separate motion.
Alright.
Uh Roger, would you like to make the motion?
Certainly, I'll make the motion to uh reappoint uh to serve till uh June first, twenty twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-seven, and I know uh Robert Bazzard, Richard Zulik, Cheryl Chase and Michael Deitz.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just thanking them for their services, continued service as well.
All in favor of the motion on the floor, seeing if I've been saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
With much appreciation, thank you. A motion to reappoint alternate member, uh Elaine Coe. Sin Cabbage.
I'll certainly make the motion to reappoint uh alternate member Elaine Corey Zikavich to uh serve. Uh is again, is this till uh July, I'm sorry, June first, twenty twenty-seven?
Is that correct, Chris? It doesn't really say.
Yes, it is, sorry.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Here with the motion on the floor, seeing if I've been saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
With much appreciation to Elaine. Uh Sony Board of Appeals, one alternate seat, term to expire. Okay, we don't have a, a motion on that, are there any tax refunds?
No, can I? Can I just make a comment on these reappointments?
Yes.
That, a lot of people don't understand um that there's a lot of work that goes into these, what these boards um do. And that these are all volunteers and that their efforts are very much appreciated. Uh we have a good sense of how much work is involved.
Absolutely, certainly, agree wholeheartedly. Chris, no tax refunds?
No, right.
Okay, uh Ashford Housing Authority, we already addressed, agenda items for upcoming meetings, I think we've discussed that.
Well, we did, and again, just scheduling a special meeting for the purposes of the contract and the.
Yep, we'll do that. Alright, I've got ten thirty-eight.
Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
They move by Rogers, second by Catherine, all in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.